Tomorrow. Wisdom is words that will govern your life. Forever and we have to listen to what God is saying because God is using Solomon to really speak to us. So you know, we can avoid those pitfalls. There are pitfalls that you know, you can avoid if you listen. You listen to it and you accept it and you accept correction and when you accept correction, you know, your life will be better. So the, the book of Proverbs has given us choices, you know, and if you are wise person, you'll take on the wise uh correction, you know, that the, that the Bible is giving to us through Solomon's.
All right, thank you for that. Um, anyone else got something they want to share? Okay, um, last week, uh, we um, we worked, we um started in chapter, Proverbs, chapter twenty-one, we're per twenty-one. And we covered on through one through eight. Um, and it teaches us that, you know, God knows um, the intentions of our heart, you know, we might do things, um, you know, you might do things good and we have, uh, you know, for our own motives. But God knows um our heart, he knows what's going on, why we did it, whether we did it genuine or if we did it for uh any other reason. And you know, we, we, we learned that and um, you know, and um, should teach us how we need to treat one another and how we need to live with one another. Um, tonight, we're gonna move on to um, you know, we're gonna start in verse nine and we're gonna move on from there. Um, and um, here goes, verse nine says, "Better to live on a corner of the roof than to share a house with a quarrelsome wife." Um, let me, I'm gonna read the, I'm gonna read the um, how the message um have it so it won't, sound like we're picking on the women. It says, "Better to live alone in a tumble-down shack than to share a mansion with a nagging spouse."
Oh, my Lord, hush up.
Okay, somebody want to start discussion on that?
You know, ain't nobody gonna jump on?
Let's bypass that one.
Well, all right, let's look at it from, from this standpoint, you know, where, where um, i- i- if, if, if Proverbs is um, you know, it's book of wisdom and it's teaching us some things, then what we should learn from this is, okay, you know, um, uh, that we don't need to be that nagging spouse. Okay, we, we don't need to be at that point and so, you know, it's, it's, it's like, you're living in a house, um, you know, um, and you can't get no peace of mind, you, you know, it's always something, it's always something and, and notice now, w- we're not talking about something to build you up, but it's always something that's, you know, tear you down or it's something that you missed, something you did. You know, you come, you say, um, you know, um, uh, uh, I did all the dishes and they all clean and then, there's a way you didn't wipe the counter down, okay, you know, things like that and so forth, for when we, we look at this, you know, yeah, it's, it's true, you don't want to be, have a nagging spouse, but the important thing is, we don't want to be that nagging spouse. We need to look at it from a standpoint of situations, how can we build up? And find the positive and good things uh out of situations versus bringing the negative things. Because normally when we talk about nagging, it's always pointing out, you know, from a negative perspective, okay? We need to use that same energy and put it a positive spin on it. So now, you know, um, instead of uh, uh, you know, yeah, you cleaned, you cleaned dishes but didn't wipe the counter down. It's, oh, great job with the, you know, with the dishes, appreciate it, everything's good, okay? And then we go and wipe the counter down. So that's, um, you know, we have to um, look at, when we looking at this, we thinking about the spouse nagging us or, you know, uh, but we have to look at it also from the other standpoint, are we that, are we the one? And because here it is, is um, the best way to fix it is make sure I'm not the one that's doing it, I'm not the one that's causing it, okay? All right, anyone want to share any more on that?
And brother teacher, it sounds also that, that, you know, when you say nagging is i- i- it kind of constitutes like uh continuous. You know, um, it's not that you can't, you know, uh, have constructive criticism, it's just that if it's all the time and, and you know, about the same thing and continual, like you said, there's an opportunity to, to, um, to turn things around, to, to help, to support, to talk about the positive thing, but the nagging thing, like, you know, that like even the, the Bible talks about, that if, you know, if they're, like if uh, if I think it speaks to a husband that is not like going to church or in faith, well, you know, you don't be critical of, you know, openly nagging because that'd make it resentful. Is that your thing is to live a life out in front of folks. Um, you know, just the, the sermon is a whole lot better uh seen than heard. And, and so instead of, of actually, you know, nagging this, you know, by my, is like you said, you could take act, you know, take action. Is this is, you know, this is the standard that we want to set, you know, in the house or in the family. Um, you know, parents, same way, said, don't, don't provoke your children to wrath. That, that would be a kind of a nagging situation, but still, you have to give direction and, and that kind of thing and the way to do that is this, is the set that this is, you know, this is how we do it. Uh, rather than the nagging piece, this is, this is how we do. And so that, that's, I just wanted to add that is, you know, you don't, uh, you don't have to be, um, you know, passive. But you can, you, you, there's a way of doing thing where it's not in a nagging situation is, um, that you, you, you set, um, you know, this is how we do it for, for your, for your whole household, for the community, for the church, the whole thing. Um, but if it's, you know, nag, 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 and you not doing anything and there's no, you know, there's no solution, talking about solution, there's no work being done. At every day, that's a, a, um, you know, a recipe for disaster.
That's right.
And you know, sometime when a person is nagging all the time, really, they need to look at, you know, yourself because it's something that's inside of you that is, you know, is not the way it should be. So you know, you, you got to look inside because a lot of times when people nagging and nagging and nagging like that, there's something going on, you know, in the inside and not really satisfied with themselves.
Well, I'm glad I got a wife don't nag.
A- amen, hallelujah.
Maybe I'm the one doing the nagging, but she don't nag. I, I thank God for that because you know what, a nagging woman, you might as well get out the house and go down.
So, um, also, I, I, I like some of the comments that have been made because um, o- one of the things I was reading commentary says, you know, there's um, constant conflict um with everything and, you know, that, that can get wearing where, you know, it, it disturbs your peace. Um, and you know, it, it, you find reasons why to stay away from those. And it's interesting because when um pastor was sharing some previous scriptures, Luke eleven and eleven says, um, in, in IV version, "Which one of your fathers, if your son asks for a fish, you give him a snake instead." You know, just, just the ideas of, you know, antagonizing individuals, knowing that um, we have a salute, we have a problem, but we don't come together to talk about a solution. So it, and it's to advantage motive, um, you know, statement. There's something going on where someone's not happy and they don't want anybody else to be happy. And when you start doing those kind of things, um, people feel justified, so on and so, and it takes you further and further away from the word and, and the union that you have. I mean, because you're, you're, you're stronger together, but if someone doesn't feel like they're getting their due or they're not being heard or whatever, then, you know, sometimes they, they start to focus on making life miserable until they are heard, oh, you know, those kind of things. So it, it takes us away from the word and it takes us away from our union as a couple. And, and I, I like what you said, this goes both for males and females because, you know, you know, and word petty, that you can be petty um with anything. And it just brings a bigger, um, bigger conflict that really takes you out of, out of character, out of your spiritual character. And, and it's really important to, to understand that those things, whether you go tit for tat um, on situations and try to get back at someone, it's seen as a, as a situation. And here's the other thing, our kids watch it, our friends watch it, our church members watch it. Um, the people we supposed to be fellowshiping, strangers see it. Uh, you might be riding in the car and, and both of you look like you can't stand being in a car because of those things. All those things start to show that we don't really see because of the, that, that kind of same sentiment. So I think it's important that we really take this to heart.
Amen.
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 Oh, sorry, um, as a person that's currently single, this truly stands out to me because like um Evangelist Mona said, I don't want, I want to make sure that I'm not gonna be a care, quarrelsome spouse, so I'm trying to take care of all the things that might be unsettled, so that I'm not unsettled. And also, it made me kind of think that um, usually you might be able to realize that if somebody is quarrelsome before you marry them. So that's something that I'm definitely gonna keep in mind as I read this proverb here, um, all the, the wisdom in the room right now, as y'all speak, that I need to, um, that's something that I need to monitor um as I am currently looking for a spouse, so thank y'all.
Okay, anyone else got something to want to add? Okay, all right.
Tell Miss Ashley, her spouse is gonna find her, she don't have to look for her. Because her spouse will find her.
I'm telling truth.
Thank you.
Because if you don't leave him alone, you got to find him and then stay with you.
Okay, all right, um, um, verse ten, "The wicked crave evil, their neighbors get no mercy from them." Okay, um, class, anyone want to start discussion on it?
Can I read the message Bible on that one?
Uh, yeah, yes, that's fine.
Uh, wicked souls love to make trouble, they feel nothing for their friends and neighbors. Um, I'm not sure if um you guys remember, um, even this political environment when um, last year, year before, it's been a lot of situations in Myrtle Beach where um, uh, these um individuals living in this house next to someone else were um, putting up, you know, racially charged, um, um, flags, burning crosses, doing things to make that neighbor uncomfortable. Um, make them, you know, fear for their lives and, and saying things that were just purely evil. Um, and the person was, you know, feeling, you know, that, that was in their right to do so. And that, this actually really brings home to me that, you know, those individuals, um, the word wicked souls, um, that, that really speaks to how people are when they think that they're right and making someone feel for their life just because of who they look like. Um, there is no feeling for neighbors, there's no feeling for their children, there's no feelings for how they're viewed as a people. They just feel they have a right to do so and the other person does not belong. Uh, you know, when pastor says that, you know, people have to be labeled something different so they can be treated a certain way, that's that wicked soul business for me. And when it said wicked souls love to make trouble, I mean, that's what they love to do and they're happy with that. Um, but it is, is wonderful that, you know, um, if one of called it justice prevailed, uh, where the individuals um had to be moved and they, they, they can be charged with hate crimes and so on and so forth, you know, there's some goodness that does happen for folks, but we do have to stand, but also know that this type of attitude, these type of people are here with us right next door. Yes, the devil's right there, yes.
I remember one thing, Jesus got a spot for them.
All right, anyone else want to add something?
It says here, "Here is a person whose passion is evil, hence he has no compassion for anyone." Wicked person typically refuse to think of anyone but themselves.
Amen.
You know, when you wicked, you don't care about nobody else but yourself.
Amen.
You know, and you do what pleases the flesh. And the enemy really is controlling you when you wicked like that because that's his character. He has a wicked character, he don't care about nobody else, he hate us with a passion. Those of us that are believers in Christ Jesus, he hate us. So the people that have his spirit in them, they hate you for no cause.
Isn't that that part of that persecution part that we're gonna go through? You know, you know, recognizing that, you know, who we represent. These things, we could say, oh, that shouldn't happen, but the word says we're gonna go through it. Just because of who we proclaim that we belong to and, and we say we follow Christ, we're gonna be, you know, in this environment, you know, and, and that's, that, this is re- you know, it's, we see this as something that shouldn't happen, but the word says it's gonna happen, we're gonna be around it, we're gonna see it, we're gonna have to deal with it, we're gonna stand through it and we know we can do that through him. So it, it's, it's wonderful to see that, you know, here's a part of Proverbs saying, what is, you know, it's like, you know, you're gonna play, y- 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 you're, you're, you're in a competition and you're looking at what your obstacles are gonna be and it's being told to us what they are, what we're gonna endure as we go through this, this trial. Um, but understanding, keeping who we belong to, um, we can get through that wicked soul. We'll stand past that wicked soul and, and that's, that's interesting that we get to deal with that in a way that is Christ-like to show that person that they have no power over righteousness.
Okay, okay, all right, anyone else want to add something? All right, so notice now, wicked souls. Um, so wicked souls love to make trouble. You know, when we, when we think, when we look at this, um, what I see is, you know, all right, think about when the Bible talk about when Jesus walked upon this earth and, you know, he was, there was, um, he, um, you know, a legion, when he ran a whole legion. They're talking, he's saying that, you know, this guy was mean and, you know, he was there, wouldn't let people cross and, you know, stuff like that, okay? So i- i- that's, you know, that's wickedness, you know, okay? But he had a possession, right? He was possessed by demons, right? All right, so here it's saying wicked souls. All right, so basically, this is, you know, you talking about the minds of people just wicked, you know? They don't have to have a, being possessed by anything to be wicked, they're just wicked on their own.
No reason at all, yeah.
No reason at all, have no feelings for other people as long as I'm happy and I'm comfortable. It doesn't matter about anybody else.
That's right.
Um, and, 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 and so, you know, they just, they just, you know, wicked on their own with, they don't even have to be possessed by a legion or anything else, they're just wicked. And basically, it's based upon the decisions that they make. Now, I would go as far as saying, um, wicked souls, ignorant souls, right? Because they don't know and they don't understand the truth. And because they don't understand, know the truth, or they don't have any wisdom, you know, they're making wicked decisions. They're not making decisions that are wise, they're not making decisions that are um not wicked or, you know, are righteous. So it, uh, um, and, and so, you know, um, when we make decisions that's gonna hurt people or we make decisions based on our own, um, you know, uh, what we want. And you know, even when we talk about, um, with, with, with Jesus on the earth, you know, you have people making decisions, um, that Jesus need to die because he was helping other people. Jesus healing people, he asked the question, which is more important, you know, on the Sabbath day? Somebody to be made whole or you worship the Sabbath day?
Amen.
And so where Jesus was going, it were, you know, where you got people that making these decisions, they didn't care nothing, you know, all said and done, they didn't care anything about the Sabbath day, they just trying to get Jesus, they trying to make decisions, you know, wicked decisions because righteousness was in the building. And so, you know, when, when righteousness show up, wickedness, you, it, it really stands out. And so, you know, we gotta get rid of this, it don't matter about the people that are, are, are hurting. It doesn't matter about the people that are dying, it doesn't matter that they need a Savior, it, it doesn't matter. Be, be, you know, we gotta get rid of this because this is making us look bad. Selfish decisions, you know, ignorant decisions, you know, unwise decisions. All those I feel can be classified right there as wicked souls. Because it makes trouble, you know, it starts trouble, um, and, and when it comes to dealing with other people, it doesn't care. You know, and we see a lot of that today. You know, we, we see a lot of situations where, um, we get, you know, where people are getting so caught up, you know, with the political environment, they getting so caught up that other people's lives don't even mean anything. You know, and, 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 you know, we, we've, we've got to come back, you know, um, especially as a nation, got to understand, you know, the love of God. Um, and so, you know, and, and, and really, that, that's the responsibility of the church. Is to make sure that the world knows the love of God. Um, and, you know, all this political stuff, all of this, these other things, the financial stuff, whatever it is, it doesn't matter. Because if, you know, if we don't have God, then, you know, we're, we're on our way to fail. And, and as a nation, we're on our way to fail without God.
That's right.
And so, and, and so when we have God in the midst, now we gonna care about people. Now we gonna want to make sure people are comfortable. Um, and then we get to work on that wickedness, the cleaning it up and we can have some righteousness.
Geez, okay.
Well, we're commanded, we, w- w- what, what are our two commands that were summarized?
Love God and love people.
And, and so I'm just wondering how in the world folks are, are, you know, are hating people in the Middle Eastern in, in, in the name, in the name of the church. You know, hating different people and, you know, calling names and those kinds of things out of, out of the pulpit.
That's right, oh, wow.
And don't matter that folks are being rounded up like animals and put in cages and that stuff like that, the church is involved in so, in, in it. And, and calling people illegals and the, Jesus said people, he was dealing with people.
That's right.
We start talking about nationalism and that kind of stuff, Jesus is, you know, did not deal with nationalism.
Right.
And I'm afraid of America because, you know, where we have a Statue of Liberty and, and say, you know, give us your huddle masses. And then we were built on that. But because of political rhetoric and, and, uh, and also propaganda that's piped, we got the church who have adopted, that, you know, who have adopted hatred for other people.
It's wrong happens.
And, and, and this, that, that, and when we talk about neighbors, Jesus said, okay, now let me, let me give you an idea of who your neighbor is, who's your neighbor? Because people think their neighbors are everybody that look like them, that's my neighbor right there next to the door. But your, your, your na- your neighbor is Palestine. Neighbor is Ukraine, your neighbor is Europe. And the neighbor is even Russia.
Right.
Right, and so fo- folks will start making up their mind who their neighbor's gonna be and Jesus ain't gonna let you decide who your neighbor's gonna be. Right, and so we start talking, you know, you know, we start talking out of both sides of our neck, how much we love and how much and that, that how much, you know, we're supposed to be Christians and stuff like that, but I'm here to tell you that when you read this right here, um, w- wicked, wickedness um, and how folks are being towards their neighbor, um, then when it's, you know, America first, well, that's not, that's not biblical.
That's right.
That is so far away from real biblical, it is, when you say America first, that is so far away from God's, um, you know, God first. Love first, and actually, the other person is first.
That's right.
Right.
Other person is first, your neighbor is first. So, so people have gotten it twisted. Um, because of rhetoric, because of, you know, uh, people selling a certain thing for power, leveraging things for power. And so, you know, we, we gotta, we gotta repent from that, um, from that stuff.
Right, amen.
Amen.
Yes, indeed.
Amen.
Better be too, wanna go to heaven.
Thing is, is that, you know, and I told, you know, it may have been a couple of Sundays ago, and I think the people trying to make, that's why they're trying to make, you know, we're spending so much time trying to make our, and extend our time here. Um, a- a- and when we supposed to be making our place in heaven.
Amen.
We trying to make our houses better, our, you know, our country better. Stuff like that, we're trying to extend. The thing is, is that we, you know, e- everyone, everybody who's born of a woman gonna die.
Yes.
Gotta have a place to go.
That's right.
And so, and so we start thinking, start making uh, America our heaven, or make our church our heaven, or make our little race our heaven and stuff like that. Um, yeah, we need to read this Bible because that's wickedness. And it's absolutely wickedness and people are sawing that and leveraging using um, some of, you know, the, the, you know, pieces of the Bible. Um, and pieces of, and, and using the church as this agent um, to uh, talk about separation and evil and, 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 and segregation and all of those things. But if you, if y'all, you know, we read this, first of all, uh, about how a neighbor is irrational and how it's gonna treat its neighbors, it doesn't care how, well, don't care about y'all. We don't care, we, we'll put tariffs on you, don't care about nobody else. Don't care about anybody starving. Well, we'll talk about abortion, but we'll let live children die. Well, we'll talk about abortion, but we'll let live children die. There's something's wrong with that.
It is.
We don't mind, but we don't, we talking about, oh, abortion, this abortion, that, and you ain't even hearing about it anymore. And there are children dying for bombs and rage, air rage and starvation. And you don't hear the church just speaking out against that and rebuking that. Because Netanyahu is saying, I'm, I'm gonna keep this thing going so I can stay out of jail, nobody will speak about that. God talked about the people of Israel, talked about Israel as, and us being a, the people, the Hebrew people and adopted. He had nothing to do, um, with the political nation of Israel, not one thing. But the political nation of I- of Israel was actually or formulated in a constitutional amendment. Or an international agreement, so that we can have an army base somewhere close to the Middle East, so people need to know that. Right, see, nobody wants to talk about that.
That's right.
And that is not the Israel that's in the Bible. And then, you so bad worry about, you know, where Jerusalem, where the capital is gonna be, I'm sorry, they need to read Revelation. That we will not have an old Jerusalem, it doesn't matter where it is, because there gonna be a new Jerusalem. Right, and so, people need to stop give, having these isms and start, and stop listening to these channels that are. Feeding this foolishness and and whatnot, and and, uh, making actually America a rogue nation. And doing the work of, uh, you know, uh, an extension of evil. And so, when we read proverbs, just read proverbs and see what it is talking about here. And see what the activity is that we're doing as a nation. And and then, when it does it as a nation, you mimic it, and then it trickles down. And then only, it happens in your, it it starts happening in the home, it starts happening in the community. We start othering other, you know, other people. And and then you read the Bible and say, whosoever will, let him come, well, who's the whosoever? Now, you can't have whosoever and and say illegals. See, that's a lie somebody's saying.
Yep, that's right.
How are you gonna say who's, whosoever but illegals? Whosoever but the undocumented, well, Jesus was undocumented as a child, cause he had to see the Egypt.
That's right.
So, we gotta stop it, we gotta stop and we gotta read with wisdom and discernment. And that's why I love these, that is, cause it just pulls the veil off of all that garbage.
It does, yes, it does.
Of supremacy and some people better, you know, even when folks talk about, well, you know, uh, I I'm gonna put a black Jesus up and stuff. Well, Jesus won't black neither, and he won't white either. You know, that kinda stuff, stop that, stop it. Uh, Jesus was a Savior. And 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 that's it, a Savior for all who will come.
Amen, amen.
Right, and stop, you know, nationalize it and putting it the blue and the reds and all that kinda stuff, all that stuff is evil. It is evil. And nobody wants to address that, and folks trying to, you know, wrap the Bible in red, white and blue, they better, they better leave that alone. So, we we have to be careful about, we really have to say, eh, we gotta start asking, you know. Um, would Jesus tolerate this? You know, a- ask a real question, would he tolerate me standing in the church and say, well, if you from Mexico, you need to get out of the church? Can you imagine him fixing his mouth to say that? I want somebody to show me one of those scriptures. Okay, I I I want him to show me that.
Cause he actually went against tradition to bring people in.
He he did. And because, because the church was, had actually segregated themselves, and you had to be this narrow piece to even be. One of them. And so, he did all for three and three years and a third. He just tore down every time they tried to segment people from, a woman can't do this, a man's supposed to do this. He, he, you know, eh, all of that stuff, you know, and 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 that is wickedness. It's how you treat your neighbor.
That's it.
And then he said, love your neighbor. As you say. When somebody was saying about the, you know, the tainted soul, that, well, it's saying it in scripture actually. That actually, it's a, it's a tainted soul. Meaning, right, it says soul, right? Okay, so that's, that's even, that's deeper than, that's deeper than activity. O- okay, you're act, you know, we say, oh, that, somebody's doing this and doing that, well, that's a behavioral issue. This is saying that the root cause is a wicked soul.
Yes, that's right.
You you see what I'm saying? Right, so a tormented soul can't help anybody, what they're doing is tormenting everybody else, cause hurt people hurt people. Right, so, you know, the the Lord is gonna prosper us even if our soul prospers, so he wants our soul to be right. And then, when our soul is right, then we know how to teach, and then I know how to treat my sister and my brother right.
That's right.
But I have to have a soul transfer first. And start having the soul and the mind of Christ.
Do I have to, else wanna add something? Mr. Garnell, thank you.
I I'd like to say something.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, I I I I listen to God's talking and, uh, that's, that's all true because. Even with, even with that, the, the, uh, he talking it out. I had to thank God because I I found myself at one time looking and and thinking. About things that I have went through, or things that I have had to, uh, deal with different peoples in different ways. Or the outcome and are looking at how I supposed to be treated them, but always go back to the relationship with God. And know who Jesus is, but letting Jesus work within your spirit. So that you could, uh, intersee what he trying to show you to bring out in your spirit. To let you know that you have to do the things in a way that he wants you to do it. But you have to do it with the love that he has for us, so that we can have the love for others like we supposed to have it. Like God want us to have it, and outcome was that it always go back to showing you. How will you do this? And how could you do it through Jesus, or know who he is, if Jesus wants you to act like this? Because it gonna speak to your spirit and let you know, you don't do it from your own respect to do it, you do it for the love of God. And you do it by his spirit, so, uh, proverb is open up a whole lot in life. Because we look around in life now, and and like I said, I have seen things, and it makes me wonder. About sometimes when people say, I know Jesus, but anything about it, they gonna treat a person different. Than what Jesus telling them to teach them, to do for them, or to how to help them. And how they make, so, you know, you can damage people by some of the things that you think about them. Or how you act about them, or how you talk to them, or how you do things towards them. So, God, God want us to be open, willing, or open with his spirit. That we would be able to do the things that he did when he was on the earth. He had no respect for no one, he he loved everybody the same, so he wanted us to do the same. But he want us to be there to help those that need help, pray for those that need pray, you know. And you, and he will show you those people that hurting, and he will show you, and if you got to feel the compassion of them. To know when they're going through and they hurt, and 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 lately, I've been, I've been. Looking at a lot of stuff, but God always bring it to me that it come to a fold that I can understand it. And that's going back to where God give you that willing, understanding of his word, but he always carry you back to him. He always bring me back to how I supposed to treat people like he want me to t- treat them. How he want me to love people, like he want me to love them, but most of I just thank him for his spirit that drove within it. Each one of, that know God, and having the relationship with God. And understanding that we can't do nothing without God, and we have to pray for each other, and we have to go through the battle of. Of being persecuted, but standing on God's word. Persecuted, but still looking at God, you know? And stay focused and stayed in the study of his word and reading, because see, when he put proverb and then going back to Revelation, all these things. All these things he already spoke on the earth, that were gonna happen, that were gonna come to pass. And how you gonna have some people that, and and to my belief, they didn't really, they don't really know God, like they need to know, they don't have that relationship with God. So that they could be a person to help change and help somebody else along the way. Besides criticize them, besides don't them, besides making them feel like they they don't have no love for them. They always persecute.
Okay, alright, anyone else wanna add something? Okay, alright, we're going to, um, uh, we're moving on to, um. Verse eleven, it says, when a marker is punished, the simple gain wisdom. By paying attention to the wise, they get knowledge. Class, someone wanna start the discussion on that? So, you notice now, it says, when a marker is punished, or, you know, when someone, basically someone, um, that's doing wrong, punish. The simple gain wisdom, you know, the simple, um, um, they gain wisdom. What, so what, so when, when, when they see that, it's like, um, uh, um, someone getting. Uh, learning based off someone else's experience, so, you know, it it's, it's kinda like when, um. Especially back in the day when, you know, crime was committed, and, you know, stealing and someone get their hand chopped off. So, you have the, um, you know, what is referred here as simple, they like, whoa, I don't wanna get my hand cut off, so. You know, so basically, you know, because of, the marker's punished, the simple gain wisdom. You know, to do this, this is what's gonna happen, that, you know, alright? It says, by paying attention to the wise, they, um, get knowledge, so in other words, the, you know, the wise, you know, they get knowledge. Um, you know, um, basically, they get, they get more wisdom based off of knowledge, based off of. Um, uh, uh, they they don't have to go through all of that, because, um, you know. That's not the way they think, that's not how, they're not the simple, and you know, when we talked about the simple when, in the beginning of. Um, um, of of proverbs, when we started studying it, we talked about the simple. Basically, it was the, the unwise, you know, the one that's just basically, um, you know, uh, you can picture in a daze, basically. Um, and and the ignorant, and so, um, here, it's saying, you know, you punish that marker. The simple gonna gain wisdom, but if you pay, but the 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 wise is gonna get more wisdom by just listening, paying attention. You know, and if we read this in the message, it says, the simpletons only learn the hard way. But the wise learn by listening, so, you know, it's, it's kinda like, um, one of the things. Eh, as children, that, you know, you you could tell, uh, you you set something on a table. And you tell a child not to touch it. What are they gonna do? They're gonna go touch it, a lot of them are gonna go touch it. Um, you know, it's, it's about like, um, back in the day, you know, I don't know if, you know, there's. Too many remember the wood heaters. And, you know, especially a young child, you tell them not to touch it. And they learn the hard way, because they go touch it, and they say, you know, their hands bandage up, because, um, you know, uh, uh, they, but they learn. And and from there, they understand, so, here you go, you're dealing with the simple, but the wise. You could say, don't touch it, it's hot, okay, they're gonna listen. And and and, you know, they're gonna listen, because first of all, um, they base, consider their source, okay? So, if, if, and 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 today with us, when we consider our source as we listen to some things. Um, we gotta understand, okay, yes, this, this is, um, you know, uh, 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 biblical. You know, this is, this is, um, um, the, you know, the, the way of Jesus. So, yes, I'm gonna listen, and I'm gonna do it this way, you know, even in situations where, you know, someone. Give you some, uh, 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 you know, even someone that's considered wicked. Give you some good advice, or 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 explain to you on some things, that, you know, you don't wanna go and 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 go on that street. Because you go on that street, this might happen to you, okay, the wise is gonna listen, I'm not gonna go on that street. The simple is probably gonna be nosy. You know, and 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 now, you got yourself in the situation, now you gotta learn the hard way. Um, because you wouldn't receive wisdom, okay? Alright, somebody else wanna add something?
Yes, I still have my wood heater mark on my arm.
Alright, verse twelve says, the righteous one takes note of the house of the wicked. And brings down, brings the wicked to ruin. The message read reads this way, a godly person will see right through the wicked. And undo the evil they've planned. Class, somebody wanna start discussion on that? Have you? One, one of the things I wanna, um, kinda point out, here that's, that's been in the news here recently. About they're working on a way to put prayer in school. So, the question that I have is. Um, is that gonna make things better, is that gonna make things righteous? You know, because, yes, it's good that, you know, the, the kids pray, you pray in school, that's good. But, what I'm, what I'm, uh, 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 I'm looking at is. What's happening, and that subject has been a big thing to cause, uh, uh, to 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 bring, uh, 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 uh. To to be a distraction, you know, and it's been a distraction to the church. Because it's so big, yeah, we gotta put prayer in school, w- but, but do your child pray at home? Okay, are you praying with your child at home, or 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 or, you know, so, so. You know, it becomes a distraction for the church, and for what the righteous will see, is that if I can get prayer in my child. My child is in school, okay, there's prayer there in school, because it's, you know. Uh, 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 um, you know, prayer in school can just be, um, you know, a, you know, we, we just, they come in and they start reciting things, okay? They recite the Pledge of Allegiance. But is that doing anything for them? Okay, so, what happens is, you know, when, when, when we see these things coming along, the church gotta be wise enough to see through it. It's just a distraction, some, you know, to get the church focused on, okay, we gotta be on the side of getting it. You know, prayer in church, so, or in school, so, you know, whoever go against that, that's who we gotta be against. Or we gotta take sides and, you know, and we gotta do this. You know, as being the church, as being the righteous, we gotta be able to see through that. And we gotta be able to understand that we instill righteousness in the child. We instill righteousness in the teachers, and in prayers in school, okay? A sincere prayer, not just something that they're reciting. Okay?
Brother teacher. Glad you brought that, that, um.
Um, it, glad you brought that, that, um, situation up. Um, to me, it is, it's another point of, um, power acquisition. So you have a group of people who are saying they're, they're going after bringing prayer back into the school. When at one point in time, they're the ones who really vote against it, voted against it. There also the distraction piece you're talking about, uh, their purpose for doing it, uh, majority of them are not about prayer. It's about a principle, that party of what they want done, little group of leaders done. So they feel they have control over implementing something. They're gonna gain popularity, or they're gonna gain votes, they're gonna do those things. If you're truly looking at putting prayer back in, like you said, the children don't have it at home. Um, you can't put anything into them at school at times. So, um, but the fact that if you're truly looking for that, then all of your decisions. All of your moves will be more godly. Everything that they're, they're offering or, or, or dealing with, uh, I mean, just as Pastor mentioned earlier. You got, you know, schools might be targeted for kids being pulled out and, and, and taken into camps. Uh, though that's, if you're leaders for that, you're protecting children from all things that harm them. And as a Christian, we should look for, for protecting, um, all folk, everyone. From being, um, subject to things that destroy their, their connection with Christ. That's including the prayer, that's including, um, racism or, um, um, social. Um, socioeconomic separations, that, that, that everything that goes with it. Um, you, you can't just pick one piece and say, this is a God stance I'm taking. Um, you have to do it all and, and it goes to show that those distractions that are out there. There are a lot of folks who playing into distractions and they get caught up into the same thing. While other decisions are being made, that affects them, I give you this piece, so I can gain more on this one. So, it's, it's interesting how, um, the world is in, is using. Um, a, a spiritual, um, a spiritual matter. To show that there are Christians or there are spiritual individuals. Uh, much like how, uh, how it happened with Christ. They used something else to distract them from their main goal. Of maintaining their power and silencing him. Um, that's what they were trying to do, um, despite what, um. What game they were, they were played, they were a part of, that they didn't know. That they were gonna be the ones that are examples for, um, for God's plan. But when we see how this is working, we have to be careful of, um, the, the things that are happening today. And proverbs keep that into light, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up.
And you know, one of the things that, that Jesus taught, you know, uh, a little more about the private prayer. You know, doing some stuff private in the secret, you know, more so than, uh, no open. And you know, during that time, it was tradition for them to come together, um, at certain times, noonday and, and all that. And, and you know, they come together at synagogue and they did prayer. And, you know, and, you know, for the individual development, you know, Jesus talked more about, um, the private. Uh, prayer, the thing that people don't know about. Um, and so, you know, we, we have to, um, you know, be careful. It sounds good, you know, and it, it is good, but, you know, as the other Vince is saying, you know, first off, what's the motive behind it? And then the other thing is, you know, um, you know, i- is, 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 um, because if it's. Um, you know, the church have to get involved. Have, the church have to be involved in order for, you know, it, it, it to, um, you know, so. And, and what I mean by that is, we can't expect children to go to church, I mean, go to school. You know, do a, um, one minute prayer. And it's make them righteous.
Yeah, yeah.
Our church gotta be involved, not only in that child's life, but in the parent's life. So that now the development can go from being a simple child to a wise Christian. And so, um, you know, a lot of times with, and, and not just, not just the prayer in church. Even as, um, you know, Pastor mentioned earlier about devotion, okay? Is that, is that your true intent? Because you think that babies ought to live, is, is that your true intent? Okay, um, you know, back in the day when Jesus on the earth, you know, and the, the lady that was caught in the act of adultery. What did Jesus say? You know, he without sin cast first stone. So, you know, he didn't, um, go and say, we, well, we're gonna go make a law against this, you know? He, he, or, or we got a law against this and we gonna jump all over that law, you know? No, he showed love for people. He showed love for people, he showed forgiveness. And so, as a church, you know, we have to be that way. Because a lot of times the church can be the most critical towards people. And the most, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, punishing towards people and a lot less forgiving. As Jesus wanted church to be. So, you know, and, and, you know, we look at in the, 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 the political environment of how things are going today. But even the church get guilty of being caught up in that from a, you know, with religious prejudice.
Yes.
And so we have to be careful, because, you know, one, one of the things, and, 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 you know, one of the big things of today. You know, when you talk about homosexuality, you have churches, you know, no, no, we don't want them in here. Well, Jesus didn't say that, and, and he didn't tell us to change them. He tell us to teach them, you bring, you teach them, you know, we, we teach them about God, bring them to God, and he'll do the changing.
That's right.
It's not our business about the other things. Bring them to God, teach them about who Jesus is, you know, and, uh, 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 let, 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 let God save them. And then God handle their rest, you know, he'll do the convicting. But we have to be careful and we have to understand, we've been asked to love our neighbor. That's what we've been asked to do, we've been asked to go out, make disciples of people, right?
No, you said, you, you, you say love our, all of our neighbors, we just supposed to love some of our neighbors. Supposed to love the ones we like.
Love them all.
For real?
Love them all.
You got to love the ones we don't like.
We gotta love.
And he said, "Do, you gotta have the Holy Ghost to do that."
Got that relationship with God. And, 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 and when we commit to God that he saved us and he saying that's all, that's why we have to go to him first. And he, and ask him to help us to overcome that hatred and to get the hate out, but then listen at his word. And when he begin to teach us how to let, and then we have to learn how to let go of things. And give it all up and forget about it and not hold it ready, and that's what wrong with people today. They hold so much hate in their heart till they got it all filled up with hate. And they, they don't, they don't see a way of forgiving right now, you know? Or they, they, it's all in their mind and their spirit or, and it, it, it's gonna take, it takes a lot. For them to come back, if they really focus on God and, and, and go back to him and ask him to clean them up. And forgive them, and then go back to that person where they, they holding all this thing and, and have a talk with them and ask for forgiveness. Then they can be able to let go and, and turn loose and, and be able to love.
You know, the Bible says, you know, that, um, well, one of the things God is saying that. My people are destroyed because of ignorance, lack of knowledge. What, what, and, 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 and today, the church is, is, is in that situation. You know, and, 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 you know, not a church as a whole, but, you know, we, we find too many. Is of the church that don't have a good understanding. You know, I, I know Pastor mentioned about the white Jesus or the black Jesus. You know, once we have an understanding, you know, of who we really are. It would, it, you know, we, it, that wouldn't be the focus. Because we know that, that's not the, um, you know, that's not the main thing. When we understand the, the, the truth about who we are, then it opens a door so that, or it helps us. That we can love everybody because we realize that the thing that we dealing with, or the things that we see before us. Is the thing that is of this world. And where, um, what I'm saying is, the Bible teaches us in the beginning, God created man in his own image. And if we go through and we reading the Bible, when Jesus came along, Jesus said that God is a spirit. And he said, "Those that worship him must worship him in his spirit and in truth." At no time was God a physical, you know, was God himself a physical, especially before, during the creation. Was God a physical earthly being? The earthly being came along with Jesus when he allowed, you know, his spirit in a earthly body. So that he can restore other earthly bodies. But, you know, when we read and study Genesis, it tells us that God created this flesh that we're in, out of the dust of the earth. Right, so he took the earth and he made a body or a flesh that can live only on this earth. And he allow the spirit that he created in his own image to dwell in it. Now, we, man, made a mistake and messed up so that God couldn't deal with us on a spiritual level anymore. So he had to deal with us on the, you know, our earthly level, so we got used to that. And we thought, we start thinking that that's the real thing, we think that that's the truth. You know, you ever watched the movie The Matrix? When they talk about what is the truth and then next thing, you know, they, they, they do all these things and then are like in a different world? Well, the truth is the spiritual portion of us, it's the spiritual world, that's the truth. This what we're living in is, uh, 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 you know, the earthly thing that man has given control to Satan over. That's why it's easy for us to look at somebody and they don't look like us and we can hate them. That's why we can look at someone and we can make a name for them, that, you know, so, okay, now they're not a child of God, they're this or they're that. But when we get a understanding that the part of us that God is looking for. Is not this flesh that we're looking at every day, but it's that spirit that living within of us. You know, it's that spirit that's there, somebody who don't realize it because they're not born again. They, you know, we gotta teach them about Jesus so that they could be born again, so that this spirit part that, uh, uh, within them. That God is looking for can be rebirthed and that communications link can be, can be, um, amended. And now they can communicate with God. That's what's gonna change the world, that's what's gonna convict people to say, okay, yeah, you know what, I, I, I am hating on people. You know, uh, oh, oh, you, oh, you know what, uh, I, I'm no better than nobody else. That's the part that's gonna convict people. But until we get there, and you know, what's happened is, you know, um, the, 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 the. What we call the church has allowed us to look at the physical or the flesh portion of us. And think that that is it, that's why on Sunday mornings, you know, it's so easy for someone. That's, uh, you know, say that they're white, to go to all white church. There's someone that say they're black, go to all black church, because I wanna go somewhere where there are people that look like me, so we can worship the same way. But that is not what God is looking for. Spirit and, and, and truth. And once we come together in spirit and truth, it doesn't matter what the, what the body looks like. Cause see, this body is gonna be, this body is gonna be, uh, 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 done away with anyway.
Preach now, preach.
You know, when, 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 when it's all said and done, it's gonna be a glorified body. And it's not gonna be this body that's, this body is defective. This body is infected with, 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 um, it's, it's affected with sin. Yes, it's tainted. And so, you know, the thing that Jesus did, he came along so that, um, you know, his, his flesh. He came along and, 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 and paved the way so that we can get glorified flesh, right? So, so, so what we have to understand is, when we see, when we dealing with somebody, we in that grocery store and somebody just. Acting mean and snappy and attitude, as we would say, we gotta realize that's not the true them. There's something that's going on, that's not the true them, they need to know about the love of Christ.
That's true.
So, when we think, and when we understand that, it helps us to love people better. It helps us to look beyond all those faults. Yes, it helps us to do that, but we have to get past the flesh. And we can't get past the flesh with flesh. We gotta have, you know, we have to have the Holy Spirit to dwell within us so that we can see through it. And I, and, and when I see this, uh, verse twelve, you know, that's, that's, um, what I'm seeing. We gotta be able to see through all of the wickedness. We gotta be able to see through all of the distractions, all of the trickery. And realize that it is not about a repu-, uh, 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 a political party. It is not about politics in general, at all, it is about God.
Teacher. Amen.
As we get that and as we teach people that, then we'll see people coming together in love. But, you know, you know, we, 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 we have to, you know, as a church, have to be prayerful for that, we have to, you know, and we have to stand on that. And, and, you know, and we have to love on people, you know?
That's right.
People that comes to the Father's Cup knows that we love on them, it don't matter. You know, it don't ma-, it don't matter what nationality, it doesn't matter what race or whatever, we love on people. God want us to do, and that's what God done for us.
Drop the mic, Jesus. Go ahead now. Good teaching, good teaching.
Amen.
Anybody else got anything?
That, that really let you know that you gotta let the Holy Spirit take over and the Holy Spirit that drive within us. And that Holy Spirit that gonna teach and guide us because it do makes you look at things different. When, when you allow the spirit to come up in your body and take control and let you know where you standing at. With your different opinion or different belief, you know what I'm saying? It makes you look more like, um, and that's why I say, I love the way, um, the Holy Spirit work. Um, cause it help us correct ourselves from our wrong. It helps us to see things that when we don't see in God's way. So, you know, and, and like, I'm listening at your prayers and all these things you were saying, that is true. And, and, and the thing about it, as a church body, or as a, we is caught up with the things of the world, the worldly thing. And I guess that why I say, the spirit is different from the worldly thing or the body of the world. Because the spiritual is the part with Jesus. The other part is with the worldly thing that we caught up around in the world. And all these things that we see around in the world. And if we get ourselves focusing and caught up in that, we will not give the Holy Spirit room enough to come in. To help us to outcome, overcome it in terms, or God have to do the turning and the transforming of each one of us. So, so it, it is good, good, lesson was good, thanks to Lord for, for the lesson now, because some of those things that you talked about, I was dealing with them. I've been dealing with it, but you know, I thank God for the spirit, that spirit that live deep down, it did me. And when he make it come up, it correct me in some of the things that I thought I was, I writing, but. I'm so grateful and so glad that God, Holy Spirit brings us out of the wrong into the right.
Amen.
I just thank God for all of that, you know, it, it's so overwhelming. So overwhelming, a good God is for all of us, you know, and I just. A good God is for all of us, you know, and I just love the way he correct us in our wrong. Correct us in our own doing and make us see things even though when I've. There's some of the stuff that you talked about tonight, I dealt with that a couple of weeks ago back. When I was dealing with this situation about the worldly thing and the spiritual thing. How we have to leave everything of the world on this side in order to. Reach that eternal life that God gave us, that we will live forever and ever, eternal life, because his spirit. When he come back from the spirit, it got to leave the stuff in the world and the spirit got to go for it, give it long back to God. I thank God for the list, I thank God for it, thank you, Jesus.
Amen. God be glory.
Amen.
Thank you, Jesus.
No one else, pastor will turn over to you.
Amen, uh to God be the glory. Uh, we thank you, uh brother teacher, and thank you for all the teachings, everybody who. Um, uh, you know, brought and and put their part uh in the soup. Um, we thankful and we're indeed grateful for the Holy Spirit and for the Holy Scriptures. Just thank you for the guidance and discussion, thank everybody for being here. Now, um briefly, if you would uh have somebody on your mind, on your heart, uh. If you would put those names out here, you know, so that we can petition together and pray ye one for another, and then we know that we are in the word. Somebody has someone. Amen, thank you. Someone else?
I'd like to put the um Prince family in uh for the loss of their um, their loved one. Um, um, this week, so give them um. Some peace and guidance during this time of bereavement. Also, I like to put uh pastors, uh you pastor and your family in, all the pastors.
Thank you.
Um, especially during this time, uh but really wanna make sure I put in the uh new converts who. Um, went through baptism. They they are protected uh even more and given more wisdom as they take every step after taking that big step. Um, that knowing that they're not alone and that we are connected with them.
Amen.
Let's put um, together and put a special prayer. For Pastor uh Anderson, cause you know what? He go through a lot with all these funerals and traveling. Know we need to could lock hand together, call each other and just. Put prayer for his family, cause he go through a lot, y'all travel, cause the other night my wife and I. And she did and then I did, we prayed for him because uh he really needs some. Some prayer warriors that pray for him and put him in the, in in your heart and let him know and let God know. Protect him because there's so much going on around him, when he go to these places, you never know what's gonna happen. But if he, if we apply the blood all over him and his family when he's sad, we don't have to worry about that, we 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 got to. We got to put um, put the leaders in there, cause you know, we 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 do a lot. But we got to praise to these ones who doing a lot of work for God, like going to these funerals and going to these houses, talking to these young boys. Look like different thing, like I go to the homeless and feed them people and. And we have a good time, we got to do things for other people. Well, put me in the prayer, prayer, you already in there already, cause you in the church. You in the house of the Lord, so, you know, let's keep them in prayer, sometime call each other, say, come on, let's. Pray for Pastor Anderson and his family, because he have to go different places and funerals and. All of this, but he need protection, I know he got it from God, but still, we can pray. Cause I have somebody numb, I'll call you and say, come on, let's pray for. But I don't have them numb because I can't go either. Call each other, that's in the church, amen.
Amen, thank you for that, bro. Appreciate it. And we certainly, these days certainly need to have a prayer on every post.
Amen, truth right there.
Anyone else?
I wanna put Ms. Nikki in her daughter in prayer for healing and strength.
Amen.
They're, you know, still beginning the school year, um there was another school shooting today, just asking for protection. In um, in guidance for these.
Amen. Someone else?
I'd like to ask prayer for coworker, um, her granddaughter. Got taken today and had to go in um custody. And I would like to ask for prayer for my brothers and my sisters for salvation and guidance. And prayer for my family.
Amen.
And um, let's put that um, young lady that that fellow killed in the bus, put her family in prayer. Just kill because he was somebody else. And let's, 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 let's keep her family in prayer, cause I know that was something to see. Her daughter, their daughter got stabbed that many times for no reason. That's what that's what's disturbing about those mean people, evil.
They they out here. Those spirits are out here. Someone else?
I like to put Kaia and her zero mother in Zake. And um, also Ms. Carol and her husband. And also I like to put all the ones that 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 really badly receiving is that. Or although that lately been getting sick about, they don't have enough or. What you call it, they're uh, not getting a lot of fluid, they need anybody, they're passing out. And um, so put them in the presser, cause I don't know that the enemy is trying to get them in different ways. And so, I think, uh, Kaia and Nala both passed out this week. There's something going on with them, so there's two of them in their seat, so put them in the presser.
Amen. But, you know, we we appreciate that, we know that. Uh, we having, uh, we having baptism, we're fighting some things, we've taken, taken the fight uh. To parts of Cedar Branch, we rebuked some things and so, folks, you need to be sured up when those things happen now.
Amen, amen.
You know, we're not giving Satan any glory, but he doesn't play for.
That's right.
And so you have to, when you get ready to go into enemy's camp and take stuff back, um, you got to know he's gonna be roaring. And so, uh, the saints have to be, have to pray for one of them.
Yes.
Yep, those are, those are enemy attacks, you wanna see how, uh, our faith is gonna hold up. I would like to, uh, given that, we also wanna pray for. For Anthony and his uh job situation, some of these cuts and that kinda thing has jeopardized his, his job, so. He's out looking for a new career and he just got married, just bought a house. And um, but those are the things that that we have to, we're facing, so we wanna pray. Uh, for uh his peace. And and for opportunities.
I wanna request prayer for um marriages, um, and also for Mother Roberta. Um, Sister Judy, Sister Lori, um, our church family, pastors and leaders.
Amen.
Amen.
I would like to request prayer for a coworker, um. She lost her daughter and she just lost her husband, so she's um. Yeah, she's really going through it right now, um, I also wanna request prayer for me, um. I'm from Dallas, Texas, but I live in South Carolina, of course, but um, my dad was sitting in the house this whole weekend blind. Cause his A one C had got up to like almost at the thousand, so he was battling ketoacidosis. What it's called, um, so I just wanna just send prayers to Texas, to my dad and. Just let him know that I love him, that everything's gonna be okay.
That's right.
Amen, so let's, let's go, go in prayer, there's a lot, uh, but we. You know, there are big challenges, but we got a bigger God. Let us pause and, and did someone else have something?
Yeah, there's a lot for you to pray for, uh, what about the children ministry, we getting ready to start up again.
Amen.
The summer there was on vacation, so we're getting ready to start up with the, with the um. Bible study with the children and the new bullet again.
Amen, and um Pastor Vanessa is also starting a new members class. And so we wanna um, just um, be uh supportive of a- all of that. So, let us, let us pause in prayer. Heavenly Father, dear God, you've heard a Bible study tonight. Um, you've heard, dear God, that we, uh, and you know that we're surrounded by wickedness. And every time we try to do right, there's evil on every side. And and so that was um, not only a statement, but it was a warning. Warning for the saints, saints to understand that any time that we start doing these things, that we're gonna shake some things up and shake some things loose. And so, we need to make sure um, that we give all the glory to God. That when we start stirring these things up, these e- evil uh things that they don't easily want to leave. Uh, but Father, dear God, we want you to dislodge them in the name of Jesus. Fighting against principalities and and high places. And and there are spiritual things that we're dealing with now, dear Lord, we've got to stop, um, dear God, please help us to stop drinking milk. And start eating the word. We'll have the capacity to rebuke things and to speak things that are not as though they are. We, dear Lord, we understanding your word, uh, that the prophet had to go and tear down. And then cast out and then build up. And some of these things, we have to rebuke, plead the blood, have to cast out. Sometimes they're in our own household, we have to cast them out, and sometimes they're in ourselves, we have to cast them out. And so, dear Lord, if there's anything, dear Lord, uh, that will not working, is there anything that impedes what we. Need to do, dear God, we ask for you to take it out of our lives right now. Dear God, so that we'll be prepared, Father, to fight the good fight. The good fight, the good fight, all of the good fights, the good fights of faith. So, dear God, let us stop by, pick up those five smooth stones, uh, dear God. Uh, understanding that we're just sometimes, you know, the, we ought to be wise enough to understand he didn't pick up one. Because that big Philistine has some brothers that were waiting in the cut too. And so, dear Lord, we're ready, let us be armed and ready by the full armor. Full armor, dear God, let us put on our full armor. And and the reason why is not only are you gonna send angels to fight for us, but you want us to be fit for the fight. Let us be ready, dear God, let us have our sword and our shield and our helmet of salvation, dear God, all of those things. Ready, dear Lord, our feet sharp. Yes, indeed, girded, Father. Fully dressed, Father, not half dressed, fully dressed. Thank you, dear God, and we especially thank you for this word and the dispensation of the word. Because the word is sharper than any two way sword. Thank you, dear God, thank you, dear God, that we've even been called tonight, dear Lord, shaped, dear God. Thank you for that. For those uh folks who are infirm, we thank you for the promise of healing. We thank you for the promise of strength. For those who are lonely, dear God, we thank you for the promise that you'll never leave us not for safety. Dear Lord, for those who don't know their way, we thank you, dear God, the truth. Thank you, dear Lord, for those who don't know who we are, dear God. That we're the salt and the light. Dear Lord, that we've been called at for a time such as this. Thank you, dear Lord, let some essence to be raised up, dear God. That uh, if I perish, let me perish, but I'm going to see the King. Have a made up mind. Matter of fact, give us the mind of Christ. Thank you, Father. And dear Lord, we know if you give us a mind like Christ, you will also give us the power. Uh, you give us the power, dear Lord, redeeming power, resurrection power. Any, any power that can get him out of the grave can get us out of our situation. And we thank you, dear God. Thank you that you can relieve us, dear God, from uh, from uh, uh unknowingness, we can, from blindness. Cure depression and rejection. Uh, that you can do that by one drop of blood. One drop of blood, and somebody said that your grace is sufficient. That your grace is sufficient. Standing, standing on those promises today. Uh, yes, you are a way out of no way, God. Our back is against the wall, Father, we thank you, dear God, when we touch that wall, dear God, that's. Uh, that actually, we've backed up against your, your son, Jesus Christ. And we thank you, Father. We have him, dear Lord, and he has our. We thank you, dear Lord, uh, for the forgiveness of sins. We thank you, dear God, for the healing of the body. Resurrection, Father. And there are all these things, dear God, are relevant, it's not just history. It is actually present and future, and we thank you for it. We thank you, dear God. We thank you that you're doing it right now. We, we thank you that you're doing it right now. And and we thank you that it doesn't have to seem some type of way. Uh, but you do it because you're peculiar. Ask us to be peculiar. So, dear Lord, it might look one way, dear God. Dear Lord, we thank you, dear God, for the things you've manifested, the things that you already given, the promise you already give. Uh, dear Lord, so we can stand on those testimonies. That's what gives us hope. Now, as we leave this mountain, dear Lord, we wanna, we actually wanna stay up on this mountain, we wanna build a. Things, dear God, but we got to go back down in the valley. Though we walk through the valley, the very valley. You are with. You are with us. You are with us. You said that you would never leave us. Uh, now that we leave this particular place, but we never leave your presence. We give you the honor, you already have the glory, and you have the power. In Jesus' name we pray.
Hallelujah.
Lord, we thank. Thank you, God. Thank you for covering, thank you for peace.
Thank you, God.
Thank you for miracles, thank you.
Hallelujah.
We have this place that we can do it all.
Thank you right now, Lord, hallelujah.
You got this, you got. All those things that we cannot handle, you can handle.
Oh, Lord, we give you honor tonight, Lord. Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
Thank you right now, Lord Jesus. Yeah, Lord, thank you, Jesus. Yeah, Lord.
We thank everybody for coming on tonight. We thank you for the teachers and we thank you for all the prayer warriors. Just grateful for the power of intercession.
Thank you, God.
Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, God.
We just, uh, continue to pray for one another. Y'all have a good night.